Oh, first time.
We're talking about the sale thing.
Meaning we'll come to order?
Yeah, right after the holidays.
Yeah.
She doesn't see you often, John.
Do you guys just sign in?
I, unfortunately, because I was in the surgeon's office, I didn't get the minutes to read them, so I have to abstain, but if, Dan, if you want to, we can do it two to zero. So you've read them, you're okay with them?
Yep.
Okay? Motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Karen, besides what's on the agenda, do you have, oh, I wanted you to tell us about the free cash.
Oh.
Did you see this? This came, this is from the mayor.
Right, so I provided you, each member of the finance subcommittee, with a copy of the email, we got certified in free cash. Okay, so those are the amounts. You'll remember that at the last city council meeting, I gave you the amounts, but it's nice to have them. You know, so I'll make sure, I noticed that, you know, I'll make sure when we get those every year that I forward them or an email to you two, okay?
It's incredible amount of money. Is there any one big ticket item?
There's a lot.
I know there was a lot of small things that probably added up, but is there any big item?
Um, not anything in particular that, like, not like when we had the, you know,
The church.
When we had the, when we had fifteen pot, it's not anything, not anything like that, but a lot of things. And, and a lot of it is, you know, the different reorganizations we've done, you know, different savings, different savings in the departments, department's money that goes back, obviously new growth. One of the things that, you know, as Lori knows how much I appreciate her services, she's an excellent employee. A different verse, different version of taxation, another thing, how we don't wait till the following year for new properties. Yep, so that was another addition.
So that increases revenue.
And also abatements. And where before, you remember, our process has changed as far as, you know, getting abatements and things like that. So there was, there was a long list of it. Again, when I'm talking about, when I'm saying that, like, for the charity, it was veterans benefits. As you know, we now get reimbursement for those. Another thing that Lori's been any, very answering. You remember that our ambulance receipts, because you know they were hired because we had to do a transfer for, you know, for the billing, so closing out-
All these things add up.
They all add up a lot, so, you know, closing out, closing out capital projects, because, you know, we're right on top of that now, we don't carry them over year to year to year. And, and again, revenue's not used. And, but one item that is really big was, we didn't use all of our free cash last year. And when you don't use it, it's the same thing as money that comes back from the departments that don't use it, it goes back to free cash. So that was a lot, too, that was like one hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Now, why, why not use that for small capital, like pickup trucks and things like that? I know you tried to do all that.
We do.
You didn't, but nobody asked you for it as, I just want to process, why would we have free cash left over?
Um, because we're very conservative and what we do with, what technically, typically what we liked, what, you know, what I like to do with free cash is use it for capital projects. And so you'll notice right away, I'm trying to stuff some into stabilization and capital stabilization, which is newly created, so that we have capitalization when we, stabilization when we need it, and also we've established a capital stabilization fund, so we have capital even in years, you remember there were years where our free cash was so bad we weren't able to do any, any of our capital improvements. So that's, you know, those are a lot of different reasons for it. So, but you had also asked for the-
Yeah, what would our balance be after we-
Okay, so all of the things that have been provided to the city council when it's all said and done, these are the balances. Once I give these, once I send the appropriations to you, I deduct it from my balances. So if you approve everything the way as is, our capital stabilization will be one million, two hundred thirty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. And our general stabilization will be one million, nine hundred twenty-six thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-five cents.
I know there's a lot of cities and towns that would be very enthusiastic.
And, and again, I'm very conservative and what I want to do is I want to make sure that we save some of our free cash and obviously our stabilization for if we, if we are hit with ninety C cuts this year from the governor. So, you know, we, just because we have it doesn't mean we spend it, we like to tuck it away and keep it for safekeeping and, and plan for future.
How much free cash will be left after all of this?
Uh, six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. And that's the free cash, but then you're gonna, I know you're gonna wanna know retained earnings, will be one million, three hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
One, one million what?
I'm sorry, one million, three hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Very good, thank you very much, Karen.
You're very welcome.
Joe, she handed out this sheet, but she said she's gonna send it to everybody.
Okay.
It's a free cash sheet, and we were just inquiring about balances after spending. So let's start with our tax classification. Peg and Dan, do you know Lori Stewart, our assessor, and Peter, our-
Hi, Lori. Nice to meet you.
She's our assessor, and Peter's our-
Coming board members?
Hi.
Are you not chair of the board now?
No, David.
Peter, David, space now. Okay. So let's go over what you handed out tonight, Lori, if you'd just inform us.
Basically, it, it's the breakdown of the residential and commercial industrial property. We're allowed to shift so much to change, to have a split tax rate. It does not best-
But we don't have a split.
No, we don't.
And we're not asking for one of ours?
No, we're not.
Okay, good. That was important. I didn't wanna hear the businesses calling me up, "What are you doing?"
No, and that's the main reason. It doesn't, and the bottom line doesn't really help the residential taxpayer, the savings that they would get, and it would really hurt the business.
Right.
So, so it doesn't really even out, it's not a benefit.
For the other members, we've never had a split rate, and not in the twenty years that I've been on the city council, for that very reason. We don't tax businesses differently than we tax other businesses. So...
So I just give you a brief summary of, of the process and where we stand right now. We have preliminary certification. We're in a rebound this year, a triennial rebound, and we have our preliminary certification. And hopefully, after this week, we'll submit all our final values and we'll have final, and then we'll be done for this cycle, we'll be setting the tax rate.
Okay, so when we, so if you look at the last page, members, you can see that the board was, signed off on those four items. And that's typical, we've never, we always do this, it's the same thing every year, right, Peter? We've never changed this, right?
No.
Because I know you've been around a lot longer.
Right, and, and, you know, just the, the different thing for the residential exemptions, you know, that works in areas that have a lot of rental housing, such as the Cape or whatever, that, you know, people close them up for the summer, Boston and a lot of rental apartments. And the small commercial exemption, it exempts some of the, the property taxes for the commercial sector. Doesn't really benefit the businesses unless you own the property. It only benefits the building owner. So the businesses that are there are basically paying for it, and they're not getting any of the benefits. So we've never gone with that one either.
Okay.
Very good.
And it looks like that we don't have any open spaces to file with the state.
That's why we have no open space valuation, zero.
Which is taxed at the, at a commercial rate, whichever that would be, ours is the same, but-
We have open space, so.
But it's, open space is anything that you wouldn't classify as anything else. So open space that we have is already, is classified under the exempt, if the city owns it, or under chapter land, if it's privately owned. So, so it has a classification, just, and open space would be if it didn't fall into either of those.
Chapter land is protected, right?
Yes.
So we have no developable open space, no?
Um, we don't-
I, I don't understand that, because I see new developments going up all the time.
No, it's, it's, it's defined as something that wouldn't fall into any other category. So yes, we have open space, but that, what you're saying, getting developed, it falls under residential.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
And like I said, the city's property falls under, you know, exempt property. And then, like I said, the other, the chapter land falls under commercial.
Okay.
So would that be like, say, like Maine or something that might truly have open tract of land? I can imagine no one owns it.
No, someone owns it, it just, different cities, they classify it differently.
Okay.
And ours just falls under-
They're either classified somehow.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So when you say that you're gonna have more information and be able to set the rate, when we have our hearing on this-
Yes.
You'll be able to give us the rate prior to that?
Probably won't.
But we wanna do this the first meeting in November, right? Is that, is that appro, that's what I heard, was when you want-
We need to have the hearing for the classification in order to actually get the approval.
Yeah.
Oh, I misunderstood the process, I forgot.
The, the, the preapproval is kind of pending this, this-
So we approve this and then you can get the final rate?
Yes.
Okay, well, we're gonna set this, I think, for the first meeting in November. Joe, I didn't set a public hearing, did I, for this? I don't think I did.
Yes.
No, I didn't think I did. Any more questions, Peg, Dan?
I do.
Yes, go for it.
Just, because I, you're talking to me fast.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right. So this first page where you're talking about allocation, that is just your explanation of if we-
Yes.
Move the burden, it would cause businesses to pay more.
Yes.
We wouldn't make any more money, so therefore we're not doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I'm just trying to- Carry on, Dean.
I have one more question. First, okay, I'm doing this for Peg. So revaluation-
You what?
What again, and how often do you do it?
Triennial revaluation, every three years.
And is that a revaluation of property?
Yes, yes, all the properties.
How long does that take?
A year, I mean.
Um, it's a year process, yeah, we started it in January.
Every three years?
Every three years, the state just passed their modernization bill, so it's gonna be five years, but we don't follow, we didn't get the cutoff, so we'll be three years again.
Are we doing that in-house, or is that being?
Um, half and half. I contracted out for, for part of that, mostly the commercial part I contracted out for.
Oh, good, okay. Any other questions, Joe, anybody? I'll take a motion. Motion to set preliminary tax classification.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, as I said, we will do this first meeting in November. You both should probably, well, at least leave Lori down and a member. And I think that's November second.
November two.
Sorry, I will turn off my phone now. The bank is. Okay, so thank you both.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, Peter. And I'll see you, if I don't see you before, I'll see you too, if I'll see you too, so.
Yep. So on to John, Parks and Rec. We're gonna do both this and, and the vehicle you want, John? Just to catch you guys up, if you don't, if you recall, the four hundred and sixty thousand dollar bond approval that we've already approved is part of this. This is the reason they're doing it, and I think this, was this, I don't remember, was this required to get the bond, local funding? Or to get that grant, or it is required? So this is an example of CPA being leveraged to use it. And you guys should know we unanimously approved this. The only thing the CPA was concerned about was future access to the rail trail, and I think John effectively answered that question. And whether or not we could build a new bathroom, but you also answered that question, so. Why don't you go ahead and explain it, John?
So we're leveraging one hundred and thirty-eight thousand from the CPA funds for hopefully three hundred and twenty-two from the state as part of a park grant for a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar old project. Renovating the stone buildings, bathrooms, making them ADA accessible, making them usable. They have not been open for the last two years. That building is gorgeous, older building that fits well in the park and to have a three-year building in, in the end would be good for bathrooms and annual storage as well. Especially making it ADA accessible for the park is very important. We're also looking to redo part of the playground up top on Daily Field, adding a couple of parking spaces next to the park, and also adding some ADA accessible features to the playground as well. And then redoing the main entrance of the park to try to come up with a better traffic flow, so we don't have traffic crisscrossing and having the full moon in the middle of the road for weekends, it's, it becomes a dangerous area, it can be dangerous area. How much traffic we had in the weekends. That's the overall scope of the project. I guess it's, it's a park grant that I've submitted to the state, and it's a seventy percent, so it's a thirty-seventy, so that's, the thirty percent is the CPA funds.
So, John, as I recall, looking at the map-
Yes.
We aren't allowed, now, when you come out of the park, you have to turn and go where it says one-way traffic on, right above Daily Field. But now what you're providing is a way to go back down Mount Avenue. They can't turn, in that case, left to go out the other way anymore.
Potentially. This is just a concept that was designed by Bill Cannon five years ago. We're gonna meet with, with Joe, Police Department and City Executive here to, to make sure we are coming up with the best traffic flow possible. So whatever is designed that meets traffic flow accessibility and exiting, just we'll work on it.
So it might change, that might-
It might change, yeah, but that's, this was, this was done, this was done back in the Stewart days, that's how long ago this concept-
The Stewart days, I like that.
So this is just, you know, something that, that was proposed at that point, but, you know, laws, traffic's changed now, so we're, we're gonna come up with the best design that, that meets safety concerns as a thing in that area.
My only concern, having thought about this since we met, was emergency vehicles needing to turn left, and it makes it really hard for them. I don't know why, if they come out of the park, why they would wanna turn left, but that's something-
There will be, what, as we move forward in this process, since the concept is some extension of the road, but it would be removable while you're, you know, so you could have, because we also have big trucks that come into the park for deliveries, you know, thinking when we did the playground, you know, if we tightened up that entranceway, we wouldn't be able to have trucks to, to bring in, you know, whatever's gonna be needed in the fields, you know, there's all kinds of equipment. So we have to have a wider access availability, and that would be included in the plans.
So part of your budget is a redesign of this?
Is this, is this one of those simple things that, although this is a grant, the state wants to make sure you can borrow it, so would you actually borrow it, or is it just-
No, we won't borrow it. And even if the, if the, if for any reason the project does not get granted, it would not be borrowed. We only borrow as we need, and the last, you remember signing the resolution that went to the council? If you read the last line, it says that, you know, that the monies would be appropriated, so we read it to mean that they need to be in place, which would be bonding, because they're not in place.
So we, we say we're-
But we don't bond it, we do not borrow.
That's reimbursable.
Right.
They want you to pay it upfront and then reimburse you.
You know, and, and Melissa has explained this to, you know, to the state several times, that, you know, what we do on typically grants is we go into a deficit, because we're able to do that, and then we get reimbursed, you know, our spending is a deficit, and then we are reimbursed. But for some reason, and again, the park, P-A-R-C, grant, which confused, which was confusing, the park grant, this is a, a couple of times we've worked with them, like on the boardwalk, so that's why you'll see the bonding request, and even though they don't believe that we needed that language for the vote, we believe that they're gonna come looking for it later on. So we just, instead of having things come back at us, we're prepared for no matter what happens. Because you have to certify by, what, the end of December, John? That, you know, everything is technically in place, but that doesn't mean that you would have to borrow the money, it just means that, that that is approved.
Okay. Any questions, Peg, Dan?
The stone bathroom building, that's the one by the exit?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And is the only, is, is the only option, it's already a bathroom, right?
Yes.
So you're just gonna make it a better bathroom?
Yes, and make it ADA accessible.
You've been in there?
And make it a usable bathroom.
Never.
But yes, like I said, it's been closed for at least two years now.
Right, okay.
There's a lot of activity in Daily Field all summer.
Oh, yeah.
It's very needed.
Yeah, yep.
It's really, really needed.
What do you use now, uh, houses?
There's, yeah, there's a fortified.
Fortified, nice.
Very good.
But there's been a lot of bathroom renovations within the park. That's the one, you know exactly where it is when you're exiting the park.
Walk by it every day.
Joe, do you have any questions, you know, set, you ask me? Okay. As I said, the CPA committee approved this three to zero. I mean unanimously, excuse me. I think it was nine to zero at the time. And part of the grant, when we do, if you look at the other, you'll see that we have a contract which we call the project funding worksheet, which is important to the CPA. And as this is a city project, John will be in touch with the CPA if there's any changes. And I think it would be who, I'm speaking as the chair of the CPA, for you to send the new design to them, just as an informational thing?
Yes, as soon as we get to-
And the council, of course.
Yeah, but like I said, we can't do anything, we cannot put, put any costs upfront until after we are awarded the grant. So any, any costs associated before the grant would not be reimbursable if we'd be at any cost.
Okay, so once you get the grant, you'll redesign?
Yes.
So John, your deadline is December thirty-first. When do you, when do you plan on hearing, well, whether it's approved or not?
They say around January, so I think around March.
So, that's on tape. So, when we approve this, that, a public hearing, by the way, is the next meeting, this Wednesday, a week tonight, you tell the state that everything's ready to go, you have the local money in place, and then, so that, that will happen in November, well before your deadline.
Yes.
Which, the December deadline was to get us to approve it, right, okay.
Yeah, I, I have to give them a copy of the, the meeting minutes from the city council meeting where it was approved.
They look for certifications also.
If there's no more questions, I'll take a motion to approve.
Motion to approve a supplemental appropriation of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand from CPA funds for Daily Field and Onituck Park renovations.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. John, if you would provide the same documents to the full council, so that would be, excuse me, six more members, what you just provided. Okay?
I'll actually make copy before I leave here, and I'll write their boxes tonight.
That could be a problem, because since we've got digital agendas now, people don't go to their boxes. Like, that's the first time I've been to my box in two weeks. All right. Thank you very much. Now, we wanna move on to Park and Rec's request for a four-by-four Silverado pickup.
Yes.
You're up again, John.
We're requesting the new vehicle for the Parks Department. I'm not sure if you have the, the need sheet at the end, and that was also submitted, but-
Yeah, they do, John.
Okay, our, our newest vehicle in the park is ten years old. The one we've taken off a two thousand Sierra that would not pass state inspection, so it needed to be taken off the road for safety. Joe's DPW's been very good about, they get anything newer on their fleet to help us out and, and make approvals, our fleet, which they have done, as well as a two thousand one Chevy C, I guess.
So the vehicle that we're taking, that we took off the fleet, off our insurance, is at the highway garage, and I'm, under the understanding, it's not even recyclable, we can't even use it for any of our other departments.
Absolutely not.
It's off the real road, off every road.
Yeah. It's not used for purpose for me.
Off of the house.
Yeah, so, so that's the, the cut dry is, we're, we're, we've been ten years without getting a, a truck, and we've had to take one off the road for safety. We have another one, which has been, well, repairs done a nice job to, to keep it going and, and make it survive, but we'll have another one that'll drive you off the road in another year or so, so we'll be now, two vehicles, but like I said, Joe has, the DPW has replaced one of them for us.
And John, how long does it take to, to get these? I know, I know Joe-
I know they had it in stock when we did this price for a while ago.
About, about three months.
Right, so that's why we really appreciate you doing the public hearings.
I know all about three months.
It seems, you know, it almost seems like you have the money, you go to the lot, and you get it. It's, I mean, it's a slow process, so, you know, being without a vehicle that's already been off the road since, when did I take that off our fleet, July?
July, no kidding.
Right, so they're down since then, so I really appreciate work, you know, you getting the public hearing going on now.
So the Liberty Chevrolet, this is a bid, I forget.
Big bid, yeah.
It's good to me, you got all the buzzes and bells you need, John?
Yeah, everything, you know, we, we wanted to make sure we have a vehicle that, especially for our tree ward, that goes out in emergency usage, that has the proper safety lighting. So that's why-
Oh, it's a V eight, correct?
They left that in place for us to, to make sure safety-
It doesn't come with a plow, right?
No, no, but it does have the ability to add a plow, we do want, do want to add one.
Is that the snow plow prep package?
Yeah, so a pre, so we, all we would have to do is buy a plow if we're, and I think we might later on.
Is that something, do you borrow parked vehicles like this?
No.
Just curious.
Yeah.
So, but I think another thing worth noting also is you'll notice that it's a twenty-five hundred. Originally, the quote that we were looking at, John, was for a, was it a thirty-five hundred?
Thirty-five, yeah.
A thirty-five hundred. And by talking, you know, to John, and John dealing with his crew and George, they decided that they don't need that, that they, you know, the twenty-five hundred is, as you well know, one size smaller, but it perfectly suits their needs. They're getting what they need and what they want, and it's a little cheaper, because originally they were looking at a, at the, you know, the, the one higher than that. And so it's been made clear that this is what you need and what you want.
Good.
At a little bit discounted price. And it's a sixteen.
I have no other questions, Peg or Dan?
Yeah, I have a question, so, and it kind of, the question applies to everything on this list. All the pieces of equipment. So, and I could have missed it, but was this spiked out when we talked about the budget? Like, as a future-
This is in the capital plan.
Right.
These are things in the capital plan, they're not in the budget. That's why they're capital, capital purchases, which is what we usually wait for free cash for.
Okay.
So as you see, we got free cash and we're, and we're on it.
And you're spending it.
Okay, so this all comes from free cash?
Well, yes.
This one is.
This one is, and you'll see, you know, retained earnings, which is, to me, the version of free cash in sort of-
Okay, so these things were on your radar, they were on, basically, as soon as we have money? We need to kind of-
The capital plan that you get every year, they're listed.
Yeah, I see that.
And then what, what I do every year with the capital plan is I re-request from the departments, obviously you can have something that's number one this year, but becomes number two next year, and then something that's not even on it, that becomes number one. Obviously, when you take a vehicle off the road and it's not passed inspection, the new vehicle becomes your number one priority. And the departments are really good about it, about, you know,
Okay, so-
Their priorities are, they're listed in order of priorities.
Oh, that was, that's a good question, but yes.
Yes.
Okay, got it, thank you.
We need to get that ESP there.
We're a long ways off, we're a week.
Okay.
The truck in, your letter, Joe, that you said would be repurposed to Park and Rec, that's the one, you already have that, you think it'll be gone in a year or two?
No, we didn't get that one.
And we'll get to that one, that's-
That's next.
That's next.
Coming attractions.
When, when we get to them, they're gonna say, yeah, we're taking one off the road, but we're giving it to Park and Rec. That happens every year.
Right, so if you see that coming, I'm just wanting to hear again about what the truck situation is. Because it, hopefully you'll be getting two trucks here.
Yes.
And so one's off the road for the safety reasons, and one expects to be-
And then one is, yeah, one is about to be off the road.
Exactly.
Yes.
So you're removing two trucks, you're getting a new one and a hand-me-down from DPW, which isn't so bad, don't, hand-me-down is a bad term.
Yeah, it, it'll suit, it'll, it suits our needs, you know, especially- It'll suit, it'll, it suits our needs, you know, especially...
Well, you don't have the same kind of...
Well, on the cemetery, if they don't, they don't travel as much.
Yeah, you don't go as, the miles that DPW puts on them.
That vehicle that we have might only last for us another three years, but with John and Michael, six more, six years.
Because he doesn't travel.
And handing that, hand-me-down is a good name. We call them recycle. And, and we started, that's a really good question, Dan, 'cause we started with John on, well, if you're getting the recycled, is that enough? And he said, no, I need, we need our own. And, and it's not often that, that they start from new.
Right. It's nice that he gets a new truck. I was gonna say, it's about time he got a new one.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, honestly, it's about time. And, and the need is, as you know, they cover a lot of turf in the cemeteries and...
Any other questions, councilors? All councilors? Okay, I'll take a motion from someone.
Motion to approve, uh, following, well, let's see. Motion for a supplemental appropriation of $36,000 on free cash to Parks and Rec for a Silverado pickup.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And this is also a...
Is this on for the 19th, Dan?
Mm-hmm. We're only gonna discuss items on the agenda, members that are on the next public hearing.
This'll probably be 6:15.
Okay, I'll just tell my wife a little bit later.
Right.
Uh, I will wait for you. If, if, if the president allows, I'll jump over your public hearing if you're not there.
I'll be there, I'll be there. I have a meeting at 6:30 for Park and Rec Commission that night. So I could be, I could be here till 6:30, 6:35, 6:40.
Then we'll do you first.
Okay.
I don't, she already did the agenda, so I don't know what's first, so, all right? All right?
We can move those things then.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
So we're skipping the 9,500 guys, 'cause that's not on the public hearing. And I've heard from you that you might want to delay it further.
Yeah, we want to delay that one a little bit, a little bit more than...
Well, we'll talk about it next meeting and then we'll put it on the public hearing, whatever you want. So now, all of the DPW items, we'll start with the 39,000. This is from Enterprise Retained Earnings, which is the free cash account in, um, in the Water Department or in the, what do you call it? Enterprise accounts. You're up, Joe.
Yeah, this pickup will replace a 2006 two-wheel drive, three-quarter ton that will go to the Parks Department. This has 117,000 miles on it now. And like I said, if we were to keep it, it might go another two or three years for us. And then it's looking pretty worn, because it does a lot of heavy duty work. But the fact that we're moving it to the park, their, their work type is a little different than ours, it'll go a little bit, little bit further. The vehicle that we want to replace it with, this one is a 2500 series. We want to replace it with a 3500 series, because we have a flusher that we need to pull during emergencies. And if we hook it to our, we hook the flusher to our one-ton during an emergency, it becomes a Class A vehicle. And sometimes we can't get a Class A driver to come in and pull that. So if we have a larger vehicle, the 3500 series, we can pull that flusher in an emergency and it, it's not a Class A truck so it goes to, it's a Class P. So we can still get out there and do what we need to do. The other thing is that we have some sewer lines that are in, out in the field, crosslots. We need to be able to get out there with a four-wheel drive and get to those sewer lines. So this will help us do that.
So, where's the difference between the 36860 and the 39?
Uh, it's just a little bit, we need a little bit more stuff on ours, toolbox and stuff like that. You mean from, from John's to ours?
No, no, from yours.
From yours.
Says 36860 in the bid price.
On the state bid, Joe.
Yeah, okay, but the, the state bid price is 368, but we, we didn't put a radio in there yet. We didn't put a striping on it. We didn't put special lighting on it. So there's, there's add-ons that...
Oh, all right. Okay. Don't be adding add-ons. We're gonna have a little dice in it.
Yep.
You're gonna be going crazy, I know.
Bobblehead?
Yeah. Little dog in the bed. Do you want to do them all together or one at a time?
I do them all at a time. Anything else? JP or Joe? Okay, I'll take a motion.
Motion to appropriate $39,000 from Enterprise Return Earnings to Capital Sewer for the purchase of a one-ton, one-ton four-wheel drive vehicle.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the 120,000 for the purchase of a loader-mounted snow blower. Do we have a snow blower now?
Yes, I have a picture of it for you. I have, um...
That's the one we have now?
Yeah.
This is the snow, wait a minute, is this the snow blower?
That, that's the snow blower.
No, it's part of the snow.
Part of the snow blower. I, here's, here's the other part. It was hard to get a picture because of, what I want to do is show you both that. One where it hooks into the loader. And if you look at the other picture, you can see the front of it with the, with the chute and the, and the augers. That snow blower...
Looks a little old.
It is, it's 1994, it's bought. So that thing is 22 years old. We did put some money into it, uh, seven years ago. New bearings and stuff like that and chains. But that was only the first level. We're in the second level now, where the sheet metal actually gets thin because of the abrasiveness of the, of the snow and the sand going through it. The chute is worn, the sides are worn, the sheet metal is worn. So it's to the point where we need something dependable to not only pick up downtown area, but to pick up in, uh, like New City area or areas where the roads are really narrow. After a storm, we've gotta get in there, or else we're not gonna get fire trucks. We're not gonna get the ambulances, we're not gonna get, people aren't gonna be able to get down most of the time.
And you use this instead of plowing?
No, no. After we plow, we've gotta go and pick it up.
You gotta pick up the, and then you put it into a truck that's following behind it?
Truck and follow it away.
Thanks.
And it's great that you'll be able to use the other one as a backup, Joe.
That's correct.
Because sometimes what happens, right?
Well, you're keeping it.
In the back of winter, something goes down.
Yeah, right.
And then we have to...
Yeah, we'd like to keep this one. This one might be 15, $18,000. But just to have it in a backup is...
Are you gonna put money into it to keep it going?
No.
If it goes, it goes.
It runs now, it runs now. And there's nothing wrong with it now. But, as I said, all the sheet metal's starting to wear on it. So one of these days, something's gonna just blow apart, then that's gonna be the end of it.
Yeah, and you might increase the life by using it as a backup.
Correct.
Might get a little bit more out of it than having it die in the middle of a winter.
That's correct.
When we're out of lockers.
And this is such a unique piece of equipment that you can't go to a contractor and say, hey, let us rent your snow blower. Because if the contractor has it, guess what? In the middle of winter, he's using it, because that's why he has it.
Um, are we gonna get this in time for winter?
Yes, yes.
Unless it snows in October.
Unless it snows in October. And if, if...
What's the wait time on this, Joe?
This might be three or four months also, but with this one running, we're not too concerned, because we can still get into the winter before we get the, if, if need be, before we get the other one, get the other one up and running.
JP? Quick question about the future of that piece of equipment that you'll be retaining and saving. What's the next level cost? To get that up and running as a ba, I'm thinking as...
It is up and running.
As, as a backup in the future.
It is running as a backup.
But as a backup that will last in the future, in the next level.
There, there is...
The new item's 125,000. That, you've spent, what, you said about 18 or something?
About 18.
To keep it going.
Because like I say, it's the, it's the sheet metal that's, that's wearing. So it's like, you, you basically gotta rebuild the whole thing. So you're rebuilding this 22-year-old machine with new sheet metal that you can't buy parts for, so you have to fabricate them. And it's, you might be spending $70,000 on this to rebuild an old machine.
And you've only used one at a time, ever?
We've only used one at a time.
You've had it for 22 years?
22.
And that's, it's a relatively good life for, in New England? That seems like great.
It'll be done, be appreciated.
Well, again, I, again, I have to, have to commend the mechanics, because they're well-maintained. It's well, just like all our equipment, they're well-maintained. They, they know the importance of it. They know that in the middle of the night, they don't want to be playing with this thing in the two o'clock in the morning, when it's 10 degrees outside, because it broke down. They, they want it maintained, so they can work on it in the garage.
We only have two mechanics for our city.
That's another question. Okay, great. Is there any chance that the, the second piece of equipment could be used while the first piece of equipment is being used? Instead of as a backup? You have the kind of equipment that could blow snow using that piece of equipment?
Well, see, see, that wouldn't work, because...
I'm assuming blowers.
When you go out to, when you go out to blow snow, you not only need a snow blower, you need three loaders, you need a train of trucks, you need a sander. You, you need, you need a whole entourage to go out. Well, we have one entourage, I don't have two.
It looks like a little parade.
You don't, you need a...
I, I guess I was, I was thinking about the time we rented three to go out. Those are much smaller pieces of equipment.
Those are bobcats.
But those were like $300 an hour or something.
Those are bobcats. This is not...
And that was very expensive when you're done.
Right.
I was hoping, envisioning, is it possible for us to get two trucks running maybe a little bit here and there on a, you know, after the snow comes?
Not the same machine.
I know, I know they're very different machines. I didn't know if they might have the same application.
This thing will load a tri-axle dump truck in about 12 seconds.
12 seconds.
So, as fast as you can have trucks behind it, you're, you're moving the snow. Where the little bobcats, they take the snow, little piece, they cut off of...
And they blow it to the side.
And they blow it to the side, you know? So it, it's two different operations.
So the snow can't be blown to the side from this piece of...
Absolutely not, in downtown, New City.
No, you wouldn't want to.
Where do we, where, I, I know I should know this. Where do we pile our snow?
Well...
Used to be Parsons School.
Yeah, we're getting squeezed where we, where we put it. But obviously, we put it in the Highway Garage.
Right.
Take some down the wastewater. We had some at Parsons, but we don't, won't have Parsons. We used to bring it down to Millsite Park, but we're getting squeezed there too, so, we're running out of places to put it. But we, when we go down the Highway Garage, we make a big pile.
Ms. Almanack says you're gonna be busy this year.
Well, we can't get two, I've never seen two light footers in a row, so...
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And the expense of those bobcats, because, you know, JP remembers, they are expensive. Those come with the drivers. Those aren't our drivers.
Yes.
Those come, they, they come on their bobcat.
Right.
And, and we only use that when, when it becomes a safety issue. I mean, we don't normally...
We, we, we need them. I, I'm in agreement 100 percent. We need them.
Yeah.
When the road gets too narrow.
Right.
Let's hope we don't, but let's hope, let's hope that doesn't...
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Any other questions from councilors? Take a motion, then. You're up, Peg.
Back and forth, back and forth. Supplemental appropriation, motion for supplemental appropriation in the amount of $120,000 for a, what do you call it? A loaded mounted snow blower. To be appropriated for free cash, to be appropriated to Capital Highway Fund.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Last item is the 225,000 for the Capital Highway four-wheel drive loader. Is this replacing an existing vehicle?
Yes, I have pictures.
So I take it this existing vehicle is pretty old?
This vehicle that we're replacing is a...
Very handsome, by the way, it's a very handsome.
A 1989 Case loader. It's a military surplus loader that was obtained for us by the fire chief. And if you look close at the plate, I don't know if you can see it, look close, close at the blue plate.
There's fire.
It actually says fire on it, because it, it came through the military surplus program and it had to be registered to the fire department.
That explains why it still has Desert Storm painting on it.
Yes, yes. It's a relatively, it has relatively low hours on it, but it, but it's so old, it's getting harder and harder to find parts for him.
We have a meeting at 6:00 here.
And the fact that it's a military machine, the fact that it's a military machine, they, the military always does things a little bit differently than, than the rest of the world. So it's, it's, it's harder to, it's harder to get parts for it.
And, and we do keep our eyes open for anything surplus.
We do.
The chiefs do all the time, as well the DPW and the, you know, Joe's...
You probably already answered this, I was distracted, but are we getting rid of this? Or is...
Yes, this, this will go for surplus or trade, depending on what we constructed the bid, how...
Right, we have to fit, and we had the fire chief looking into that, like how we get release of it, because it's federal.
It's a military vehicle.
Right, sometimes there's different, you know, restrictions on how you, how you surplus it.
But I'm told that it's maybe worth between $5,000 and $8,000.
Which is another story. So, as you know, we were talking earlier about the, um, the park truck that came off the road that is not recyclable to any of our departments. So what we do is, we don't actually bury them at the Highway Garage. We take them off, I take them off the fleet insurance, so that obviously we're not insuring vehicles that aren't on the road. And we surplus them. that aren't on the road, and we surplus them. So we have, um, once a year, usually Rick from Highway, um, the mechanic, he'll let me know what we need to clean up, what, if we have, whatever we have in the yard to clean up, and I have a list of all the vehicles, and we'll do a surplus bid. Um, so, you know, we don't do it if we just have one vehicle sitting there, 'cause that's not worth the advertisement and all of that, but that is how we get rid of things, there, you know, that's how we surplus our vehicles, when they're no longer can be recycled to any other department.
Is there a good market for those?
We get a, we get some good bids, some, you know, um, I'd be happy to show you, you know, the, like, the ones from last year and the year before, but it's surprising, sometimes you get, uh, nothing for one vehicle, and then one, and then once, something will, will shock you. And we have a list of people that come every year, so anybody that's ever bid, um, I send out the, the list, the surplus list to everybody that has ever bid, so, and they come from around.
And if you get no bids, does it sit there till the next year? At some point, do you trash them?
No, no, no. We've, I don't think we've ever actually had anything with no bid, but yeah, no, we don't, they don't sit.
No.
Because they need to keep their yard clean so that they can operate, it's not like they have all that extra room there, but, uh, if it happens, then it goes like for a recycling.
That's right.
You know, where there's somebody that takes something that you wanna get off your hands, and sometimes gives you just, you know, a minimal amount for it, but it's like, just like cars, you know, if you've got a car that you can't sell.
Usually cars people, do that, do that.
A lot of times, cars people. Yep.
A lot of times.
Yep, a lot, and it's a lot of different communities, Joe, too, that'll come, you know, it's, it's, it's funny, people from all around, sometimes out of state, people looking, it depends what's on that list, people looking for different things.
Oh, I, I know this is probably a typo, it says total request 120, but at the front of your letter, you say 225, so that's just a typo.
Yeah, it's a typo, I, I copied and pasted it.
I've never done that. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So, obviously, the reason I moved these forward quickly is because these are all winter-related vehicles, and we still may not get them till January.
Correct.
You said three months, it's already October, it may not be till February.
Yeah. The, the snow blower may be three months, the loader may be four, maybe five months.
And the reason we can't order these earlier is because you're waiting for free cash.
Right.
My, I'm wondering, and this is your...
We, we've had a, obviously, I've already had this conversation with Joe. We do our finance planning, and, you know, the beginning of the year, you know, do you wanna wait till free cash? Do you want me to put it through under stabilization? And we have, and you'll remember this in the past, sometimes we'll put something through in stabilization, and then when free cash comes through, we put it back in.
Right.
And we actually honor our word about putting it back into stabilization. So, but this was agreed upon, that, you know, this would be a, a good timing, because we are a community that gets our free cash certified early. You'll remember in past years, sometimes at least December, but, you know, with our, you know, with our auditor, she, she applies early as soon as she can, so we, we get it certified early.
And all the other vehicles are still usable to a certain extent? Like, is this loader still usable?
It's still usable.
So if you need it before the new one comes?
That's correct. The, the, the most important one, this one here, is still usable.
Usable.
So if we have to blow snow in January, we'll be able to blow snow in January.
All right, so that's another reason to use free cash, 'cause that's a better process than going back and forth.
It, it is, but you'll also notice that, you know, I established the, the, um, the capital stabilization, which would be another good use for that if he couldn't wait, you know, so these are conversations that...
I was gonna ask you how big a ticket item, or is it an emergency ticket item for capital stabilization? Is that designed to be used like this, if, if he didn't have a loader, it was done, you might use it to buy this, and then we could put more money back into it, but that's, that's the way it is.
It's absolutely designed for capital, capital purchases.
Major purchase that you can't fund any other way, and we need it. Good. I like it.
Instead of just using general stabilization.
All right. Question?
Uh, I noticed that you're, you're replacing it with a Volvo product?
Uh, that was just a, we, we're leaning towards Volvo, we, we haven't made that decision yet. Um, the Volvo was a little cheaper than the John Deere, uh, but we haven't, we haven't really fleshed that out, to figure out what type of machine we're going with.
In between, um, Rick and Dennis and Highway, what they do is, they do a lot of researching on what product they buy, based obviously on, on its durability and its repairs, but also on what they can get serviced, you know, like the equipment they need for, or sparks, that type of thing. So, uh, we feel that they're the ones that maintain them and fix them, so they have a lot of input into what we purchase.
Case in play, we bought, we recently bought a mini excavator and a, um, skid steer for Volvo, for, um, the Water and Sewer Department. Well, two years of free service came with that, so it was, it needed service, so Dennis called him up and said, we're bringing it for service. I said, what do you mean? He said, well, there's two years free service, we're bringing it down. Oh, okay, so...
So that's why you were Volvo, 'cause you got free service?
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons.
My only concern would be availability of parts.
Right, that's major concern.
Volvo being, are they made in this country? I don't think they were.
I'm not, I'm not sure where they're made, but, but they're, they're very prevalent in the area, so...
So they must keep parts someplace.
They've gotta keep parts someplace.
All right.
I noticed that it's the higher end of the Volvo product?
Yes.
There were two different levels. I know that you considered the 3500 for the truck, dropped down to the 2500. What are the reasons why the L70 or the L60 wouldn't be...
Well, that's another thing that we've been doing, and I was clear when I was talking about John, we get what we need. There were times where, you know, you try to save money, and I, I am a strong believer where it can be penny wise and dollar foolish. So we get what the departments need, and, but on these things, it's really, uh, Rick and Dennis do a lot of research onto the items.
And, and to explain that a little bit differently, this snow blower here, we use this with our John Deere 544. We purchased it with a 1994 John Deere 544. In 2005, we bought another John Deere 544, and the old mayor said, you have a 5...
Former.
The former mayor said, you have a 544, why don't you use a 444? Could you get away with a 444? We said, no, because, he said, well, all you're doing is pushing the snow blower. I said, that's true, but you have to pick the snow blower up to drive it through town, to put it down somewhere in, in, in...
And snow.
In, in snow blow. So the 444 isn't big enough to pick up the snow blower without the back end coming up, so we could have...
You had good reasons.
We had good reasons.
Not knowing anything about trucks and, and, and loaders, when I look at the specs and compare, at the comparison sheets...
Yeah.
Between the models, there doesn't seem to be that much difference, and I would love to have somebody explain to me the difference.
Well, there could be.
I don't, I don't necessarily, but maybe, you may not be prepared for that now.
I, I definitely...
And it may not be the choice that you have, as you say, it may not be the Volvo.
Right.
Frankly, I'd much rather, I mean, I'm presuming that Volvos may be made in America, but not by American, American-owned company?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure.
John Deere and Case, I think are, are American...
We have Volvos already, the guys love them, they're, they're, they're easy to maintain, they're easy to service, they're easy to work on, they're easy to run, so driver fatigue is a big thing, too. Uh, but when you start reducing the size of the machine, you reduce the, the, uh, the pressures on the hydraulic hoses and all that, you know, you're, you're just, you, you're buying something that's not quite big.
You end up having to fix more often. But to that issue of American-made, I too agree that we'd like American-made, but I feel this, this world economy, we have a